I have six o'clock. Thank you, everybody. We'll proceed with. Thank you, everybody. We'll proceed with the July 6th special meeting. Let the record read that the entire council to include the mayor are present. If you will, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Bear with me. Bear with me just one second here, everybody. Okay. One resolution. To vote, to introduce and vote on Resolution R 21 6, the Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Chesapeake Beach in support of dredge funding. Holly, I'll let you give an overview of the resolution before we open it up to council.
Okay, great, thank you. So this resolution is basically allowing the town to access funding that is currently contained in our dredge fund. And this funding is needed in order to clean the dredge maintenance or dredge material placement site that the town operates. The Fishing Creek Channel represents a key access point for both the U.S. Navy, the state of Maryland, our local charter fishing, and Town of Chesapeake Beach recreational voters. The total project cost to do the channel dredge as well as the jetty wall rehabilitation and clean out the DMP site in order to prepare it to take this material is $3.7 million. Of those costs, the town with this plan would be covering 12%. The state would be covering 7% and the federal government would be covering 81% of the total project cost. So the plan that we have found that would be most economical to the town is to piggyback on a existing contract that Calvert County government has with a local contractor to mobilize and clean out, do the necessary work to clean out and prepare the DMP site. We're having to take a larger stockpile than we have in the past because of the dredging that's necessary to reach the jetty wall and repair the jetty wall. From there, we would be required to pay tipping fees for the disposal of by cubic yard of dredge material. So we've provided an estimate of what those costs are expected to be. We believe those costs are very conservative in our worst case scenario. And Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to allow Wayne to give an overview as well of this project.
Sure, thanks, Holly. We worked with Crandall, the contractor, as well as Sandy Phil, which is a dumping facility in Lothian to create a scenario whereby Crandall, who does marine contracting work, it's a specialized project type of work where they dry and truck out and haul out dredge material, will be able to work on our site to clean out our dredge material and haul it to Sandy Phil where it will be dumped. Sandy Phil will be charging us eight hours per load. Typically charge eight hours, eight hours for dry material. They're charging us eight dollars for any material that we bring to them. Along with that, we'll be paying Crandall, which you can see their proposal here in front of you. This is for 40,000 yards, which we believe is the maximum amount of material we could ever get out of the site. In essence, we'll leave this facility empty and ready for the federal dredge, which is the purpose of this project.
Okay, thank you, sir. So let me begin with council questions. I'll begin with Derek and work my way around.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Holly, would you explain the significance of piggybacking on the county contract and what that means for the town?
Sure. So our town charter allows the town as a procurement model to piggyback on existing contracts. And so that is at a, we believe, a cost savings to us versus going through a bidding process for this work. Just based on the current rates and the county's contract.
So, I mean, can you articulate how much, I mean, obviously saves time, but also the cost of and what the monetary value is of piggybacking versus going our own route? Is there a guess on what that might be?
Well, the time savings is probably what would be the most significant to quantify because if we issue this work now, it's going to save us probably a lot of money versus later. A lot of the contractors are busy working on other work later this year. So right now they're available. Also, Crandall has given us reduced rates and I'm going to let Wayne cover that in further detail.
Thank you, Holly. Yeah, we worked with Evan and John O'Crandall. They have a standard rate which are, they are competitive bid via the county process and they won that bid by being a low bidder. Beyond that, Crandall, in order to help us out and because of their workload at this time, we were able to negotiate with them a reduced rate for much of their hours. So if you, if you look at their standard rates for the county contract versus this one, I'm going to say that we saved about 25% on their rates, given the ability to use that contract at this point.
Yeah, 25% is not insignificant. So, all right, great. That was my only question. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Derek. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, that was also my question. I was just curious as to what that meant in terms of cost saving. So I appreciate that. And I think Wayne may have already answered my other question when you told us about how much material was going to be removed from the dredge site. And that you said, I know we're removing 40,000 cubic yards and it sounded like then that that is the capacity of that area. Is that correct?
That is, the material is in there today. We surveyed, we surveyed what was there today. To make the entire DMP completely empty and at its maximum capacity, we will be removing 40,000 cubic yards. The DMP has a little more volume than that, but not a significant amount more. So that's to remove what is there today and make it completely empty.
Okay, all right. No, that's what I was curious about because it wasn't, it wasn't quite clear from the documentation what the actual carrying capacity of that area was versus what we were moving. So thank you very much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Keith. Greg?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. This reads and sounds okay. I know Crandall is a known commodity. They're an Arona County-based business that specializes in marine construction. I had a question about the piggybacking. Are, you said that our, our, the town code allows us to piggyback. Does it allow us to piggyback on contracts at other entities or just town contracts?
Other local governments.
Okay, so I presume somebody looked into that. I just, I had a question about that. Okay, and the unit, the unit pricing, I know that they had offered or they agreed to some reduced rates. How do those costs compare historically to past dredges?
Past dredges or past cleanup of material?
I'm sorry, past cleanup. I apologize. Yes, past, past where we had to load and remove and clean up the spoil site. How do those rates compare to what we've paid for in the past?
So, in the past, the last work that we did at the DMP site was funded by DNR and it was a little different than this scope of work because a lot of the material was stockpiled and left on site. So we didn't have the, a lot of the trucking expense. Also, at the last time we did this work, one of our local businesses actually took a large portion of the spoil and used it for a project that they were, were doing at their site. So that saved us money. So I, I couldn't completely compare this to those, those two projects. We, during this administration, we have not had a project of this scope that I could compare it to, but I could go back and look historically when the last time a major. Jay, maybe you could speak to that more historically?
I can, Holly. So you're correct. We had some moved on site, dried out. We had some fill a spoil site. So the last time we actually paid to haul some out, I think was in '08. So I do not know the rates or the cost of it now, but we can find out. I'm sure it's going to be.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. And that's not necessary for my question tonight. I think we're comparing apples to oranges all the way down the line on that. And my last question was about, it's really just out of curiosity, the process. They've got to dry out the spoils prior to loading and hauling away. And any idea how long that process might be? And I know it's a little, it's going to be weather dependent. In other words, we can't just load up the trucks and haul them out one after the other. We've got it. The, the plan is to dry out the spoils, load up the dry spoils and haul out those spoils and, and while, and then we're waiting for more spoils to dry prior to loading them.
That's correct, Greg. You know, it's going to take a couple of months to, for this process to occur. And you said it exactly accurately. They're going to winrow the material in the DMP, allow it to dry, haul it out, and then winrow the next, next section. It will take several months for it to occur. We're hoping to have it completed by the end of September or October.
This year?
Correct.
Okay, okay, great. No other questions. Thank you all.
Thank you. Larry?
Thank you. Minor point, but since it's in the actual resolution, I think I need to point out that the third whereas town is permitted to, right now it says piggy bank?
Yes, sorry. We have that correction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then on the other information, some of my questions have been answered already in terms of hauling out the material and where it's going. So thank you for those answers, but I also wanted to just ask, is there a need for any testing to be done on that material before it's hauled off site for any kind of contaminants or anything in the material itself?
There is not because this is going to a, we'll call it a soil fill site. They're licensed to take any material. And they're not, they're not requiring any testing before that. They are actually licensed to take dredge material.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
My question's been answered. I was curious about the volume just because I didn't really know and that's kind of interesting, but it's already been covered and as usual, it looks like you guys really done your homework. So it seems like we have a pretty solid plan. I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, and lastly, Valerie?
Oh, yeah, I just have a few questions, if I may. First of all, so this, we're gonna take out approximately $20,000, $50,000 from the dredge fund line item. My question is this, and I know it's a guess, but how many years before our next dredge? After this one? Is it one year, five years, seven years? I mean, just a guess.
Wayne, you probably would make a better guess on that.
I'm going to guess, it's really, Valerie, to be honest, we're totally dependent upon how much material the core comes in and takes out. They have several options for different depths. And their depths depend, depending upon what depth they dredge to depends upon how much material they can displace. Most of it's going to go to our DMP site. They are also looking at other locations to take it to if they have that ability. I would certainly think we wouldn't be looking at something for three to five years, but again, just a guess.
Okay, no, that's all. I mean, I totally understand. It's a guess. And let me tell you where I'm going with that guess. Is I think this shows in specific relief, the success of having a dredge fund. These monies are readily available in that line item because we put money away. And so let's say it's even five years because we'll hopefully won't use the complete $760, $7653. And so if we use $450,000, my suggestion, when we do the budgeting, is we use five years and like $120,000 per year goes back into the dredge fund. Because we've shown that this is good financial management to have this money available. And so I don't know who I'm mentioning that to, whether it be Pat, Holly, or Dale. But I think in our next budget cycle, we should start a plan, replenish the dredge fund because this is exactly what this was intended for. So how do I go about making that happen, kind of? Oh, go ahead, Pat.
No, I'm with my.
Pat, I apologize, but I'm having a little trouble hearing you. I think you might be having that audio problem and I'm sorry.
I don't know what to say, but do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Should I proceed?
So that was the first one, was replacing the dredge funds that we're expending. Maybe since, I know it's a guess, we can use a five-year cycle. And so whatever money we spend for the next fiscal year, we can take whatever we spent about a five and plan on putting that back as replenishment into the dredge fund. And also, we should consider as we go through the budgetary cycle, if we know of other long-term costs, this sort of model of putting money aside for a known future large capital expenses works very well. Next question. It's my understanding, and I think this might be for Wayne, that it's only the Town of Chesapeake Beach that uses this dredge spoil site. Is that correct? No private entities use a dredge spoil site.
Correct.
Great. And my last one is on the jetty rehabilitation. I mean, I am happy that it's occurring, but I still think we have an opportunity in due time to increase potentially the time between dredges by reengineering those jetties and making them more parallel, have more of a height. And so that's still on my radar. I know it's not for this one and we're just increasing the height and we're just increasing the height of the south jetty. We're not increasing the height of the north jetty. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and you can still see the waves overlapping the north jetty also. So maybe when the north jetty is considered, whenever that might be in the future for rehabilitation itself, the waves do overlap it. So we again, think about how we could reengineer that to make the hydro, the hydro, the hydro flow a little bit different, hydraulic flow. I think if anything, from what we've seen under Fishing Creek Bridge and how that nice flow works and how the depth is much better. It just may help. I know a lot of the sediment is coming from the south side. But any sort of flow that we could have that could disperse materials going out to the bay would be, you know, great. An extent. All I'm looking for here is an extension of the time between dredge because it is so expensive. Other than that, those are all my questions and all my things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I need a motion to approve the resolution.
Move that through.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we've had our discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Okay. At this time, we need a motion to adjourn the special session.
Special move?
Your second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Now we're going to move over to the work session. I mean, Holly, I'll let you do whatever you do. Or we just doing nothing? There we go. Okay. I mean, I'll be right with you guys in a second. Okay, all righty. Welcome, everybody, to the July 6th Town Council informational work session. Let the record read that the entire council to include the mayor are present and once again, let's, since I never get tired of saying it, let's, let's do a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
One nation. Justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Now, need a motion to close the record reading to go into closed session under the statutory authority of the Maryland annotated code pursuant to general provisions article 3-305B subsection 7 to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Because we, I think we commonly think of it as a house that you just rent out. And nobody's there, but I think it can be done the other way as well. Where there are cases where it's just a room or two in that house that they are renting out. And they're calling it a short term rental or an Airbnb as well. So. It would be very good to understand exactly what we're talking about here. And I also think, you know, that this list obviously isn't the end all be all. I think any of us should be suggesting a third alternative just because we've collected. Some input. I mean, that's what we're here for is to discuss these things. So it's not just. One or one parenthetical one.
Well.
So anyway.
I agree. Uh, Keith, I agree because I mean, suppose you think it should be 10 miles, not 25. This is the time to, to bring it up. So you're right. Suppose you think it should be 5 miles. You know, yeah, no, well, that's where we're, we're going to.
Of the property's address and I'll begin with Valerie and we'll work our way around.
Uh, yes, um. I actually had provided one that's not listed here and that is property owner lives on premises. And so I would like that back in for discussion, property owner lives on premises. As a resident. Where I have in the past two years have been able to see five different properties used as. Either B and Bs or short term rentals. I think it's important that we have the property owner living on the premises. And also. I'm not exactly sure where property owner or manager lives within twenty-five miles. But I also wrote number six. And number six was supposed to say. Property owner has no more than one vacation rental in the town of Chesapeake Beach and the primary residence is within municipal boundaries of Chesapeake Beach. So basically. If will of the council becomes when it's voted on. Uh, at town meeting after public discussion. It would basically have two choices here. One is that the property owner lives on the premises. Which is what I want because what my fear is. Is this? As an elected official, I fear that we will have people buying properties that do not live in town. For solely as an investment vehicle for short term rentals. Managed by off, um, out of town property management companies. That's my first fear. My second fear. Is that at as even a small number of properties are bought up. That will increase the property cost for affordable housing, especially in the middle subdivision. So it'll increase the property cost. The amount of money needed to buy a home either for a first time home buyer. Or for affordability for those that make lower incomes. Or remove. Even one or two or three or four or five or ten houses. From our long term rental stock. And so I think A, it's really important that we have the property owner living on the premises. Or. The property owner has no more than one vacation rental in the town of Chesapeake Beach. In CRM, commercial or maritime, and that their primary residence is within the boundaries, municipal boundaries of Chesapeake Beach. So wherein. What was proposed was twenty-five miles. Which is just an arbitrary radius around the town. Circle. If we keep it within municipal boundaries. Then it's a, and that person's, it's their primary residence. He has one vacation rental. Um, those are two different ways to approach maintaining a, uh, the quality of areas in which we live, maintaining our property values. Um, and let me be clear, um, I've met with anyone that asked for a meeting I've met with. I've talked to people on the phone and I've talked to people in my day to day going. So I've talked, tried to get a pulse. Of the people in town. And it's mixed, it's mixed. And so I personally will not support short term rentals, vacation rentals. But if there's going to be an ordinance that potentially pass, I think it ought to be the strongest ordinance possible. With as many common sense rules that are enforceable as possible and we need to protect our. Our town residents. And I have grave concerns about out of town property management companies coming in. I just did. I mean, once you start that ball rolling and I've heard one elected official comment that, you know, they at least like to discuss. Increasing the footprint of the commercial zone down to Veterans Park. I saw in another report. That there was talk about having, um, the commercial zone go from Veterans Park to North Beach. So even if we think we're controlling it, you're just having it in commercial and maritime. My fear is an increase in the footprint of short term rentals, which is why. For anyone that wants to vote for this, I'll encourage you to create the strongest ordinance possible and I provided many suggestions. That are in this ordinance. But I personally, no, I think it's a, it's a snowball that, um, we do not wish to have here. It's kind of warm. And so. My point is, is that. One is omitted, which is what I wrote, which is property owner lives on the premises, which can be discussed. And the other one that is number six, but was rewritten, the words, property owner has no more than one vacation rental. In the town of Chesapeake Beach. Commercial maritime and their primary residence is within the municipal boundaries of Chesapeake Beach. And the primary residence would be determined in the definition that's provided at the end of the ordinance. And that's all I'll say on number one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate Valerie. Uh, Charlie.
Well. If I may suggest, um. And you can ignore this, um, it's, it's hard to take these one at a time and I think Valerie just kind of pointed that out. So as far as number one, if, if you want feedback on number one. Um, I propose, I would propose no changes to that. Um, but I feel like, uh, it weighs in on a couple of other items here. Um, like number six and also. Uh, number, sorry, I'm not quite as familiar with the numbers. Shelby, uh, number nine, because I think that that needs a little more clarity as to what it means to be available. Uh, what, what mechanism, what response times, et cetera. Uh, and if, if an owner's not living on the premises, but rather within a twenty-five mile radius or an owner or an agent. Um, what that looks like. So, uh, on number one specifically, I have no feedback. Um, uh, other than I think it weighs into some other bullet items, if that's a suggested way to maybe talk about all of these in total. I guess I'll stop there and see if any, how you want to respond to that.
Uh, Charlie, I, um, I am going to go one by one, uh, but we're certainly free to talk about. If, you know, the others, if it comes into play, but I want to ask you a question, uh, clarify your statement. You said you don't want any changes. You don't want any changes to what? What was originally in there or what the, the suggestion is?
I'm comfortable with the suggestion on number one.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay, very good. Thank you, Charlie. Uh, Larry.
Uh, I'm comfortable with the proposed change in number one and, and the only, um. Comment that I'll make in response to Councilmember Will Dean is. If the owner is living on site, it's not a short term rental. It's a rooming or lodging house. That's my understanding of definitions of those terms. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Larry. Um, Greg?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, I agree with the changes. I, I don't have any questions regarding number one. I'm comfortable with what's presented here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. So, no, I don't like the change to number one. I would keep it the way it is. Um, and I think Larry brought up a good point about definitions. Um, cause I know I've had discussions with other council members about exactly what is a short term rental. Uh, because we, I think we commonly think of it as a house that you just rent out. And nobody's there, but I think it can be done the other way as well. Where there are cases where it's just a room or two in that house that they are renting out. Um, and they're calling it a short term rental or an Airbnb as well. So it would be very good to understand. Exactly what we're talking about here. And I also think, you know, that this list obviously isn't the end all be all. I think any of us should be suggesting. A, a third alternative, just because we've collected some input. I mean, that's what we're here for is to discuss these things. So it's not just one or one parenthetical one.
Well, so anyway. Keith, I agree because I mean, suppose you think it should be ten miles, not twenty-five. This is the time to, to bring it up. So you're right. Suppose you think it should be five miles, you know, you know, yeah, no, well, that's where we're, we're going to, we're, we're taking notes on what the council. Is, is discussing, so feel free to come up with an alternative that.
Okay, and I, I definitely think the owner should be on premises. Um, for these, I am also concerned about, um, you know, the community, the community, wh- what is our community like? Will we be losing housing stock? And, um, so I prefer, you know, more control. Than, than less of those, those properties. So that's all I have to say on number one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Uh, Derek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I hear what you're saying, Keith and, and others. Uh, I honestly, I don't see it as practical to require. An owner to live on the premises of a short term rental and certainly in the case that, that. Keith suggested, you know, renting a room or a couple of rooms or a basement or something like that, that, that makes total sense, but. If, if we adopted that requirement, then that would remove an opportunity to rent a house. And that also, like you said, falls into the, how do you define what a vacation rental or short term rental is? So honestly, I don't see it as very practical to. Uh, keep that current, uh, condition that's, that's in queue, that the owner lives on the premises because that's, that's limiting. And I understand the logic, but I, I don't see that as, as practical. However, I, I would say I am in strong favor of. Limiting, uh, the area in, in which the owner's primary residence. Is in proximity to the town of Chesapeake Beach. I'm, I'm very much in favor of, of a, a very small number. Uh, whether that's within the municipal boundaries, uh, you know, I, I think twenty-five is, is a little too far. I didn't, I didn't draw. Draw them, draw the line to see where that crosses. I mean, I guess in, in theory, perhaps that could be over across the bay. Uh, if, you know, at twenty-five miles, if you draw a circle around the town, so. Uh, I, I think, uh, we definitely need to reduce that to, I, I, and I recall a, as a parallels, not the same. Topic for sure, but we, we discussed in a previous ordinance about, uh. I think it was, uh. Had to do with water and sewer perhaps, and we, there was an extension out to ten miles and we were discussing the number, you know, where. How far is Dunkirk from, from town? Uh, and I, again, I don't remember the specifics, but we, we limited, if I remember, we. We settled on the number of, of ten miles for that situation. And, uh, that seems a lot more practical. I could probably even agree to a smaller, uh, radius from town. But I think twenty-five is too large. Uh, but I am in favor of that. But again, I don't, I don't see it as practical to. Require and limit. That an owner, uh, living on the premises. So that's my comment for number one.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate all your comments there. Um. Number two is to delete the, uh, sentence, no separate kitchens are provided. Is, is that, is that kind of like a no brainer to just, you know, delete or? Does that give anybody any heartburn?
I have a question about it.
I, I think we should go around, Mr. Mayor, on that one.
That's fine. That's fine. Oh, okay, Derek.
All right, well, I'm, I'm in favor of deleting it. Again, I don't, uh, I think that's a remnant of, of the past definitions and, uh. I don't think it's as applicable, uh, with what we're, we're, as we're revising, uh, queue. So I, I'm in favor of deleting that one.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
Yeah, thank you. So. So this section of the ordinance was originally for rooming, boarding and lodging houses. It still includes rooming, boarding and lodging houses. Uh, does that mean? We would allow them to add in additional kitchens or cooking areas in, in, in those establishments? Is that what we want? I mean. My, my, I guess my question is, I don't know what the ramification of that is. Except that you're basically have the opportunity then to start build, you know, turning them into apartments, I suppose, if you're giving them separate cooking areas. Within the same structure. So I, I just bring that up to try to get a better understanding. Maybe somebody else out there, uh, has a better concept about, about what. Regarding what that is actually meant to prevent. So anyway, I'll stop with that. I, I, I have a tendency just to. Say, keep it in because it was meant to prevent. You know, adding, you know, making apartments is how I read it.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a very interesting thought, uh, and I'm not sure, but you make a great point because I, I don't think that's what. We really want is, is little apartments with kitchens. Um, or no, you know, no, no bed and breakfast ivory state had that, but anyhow, um, okay, uh, Greg, thank you, Keith.
Uh, yeah, all things considered today, uh, item number two, I agree with deleting that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Larry?
I'll just share some of the same, uh, conflict that's been articulated on, uh, how that fits in with the other possible uses. Including the rooming and boarding and lodging. Uh, my understanding is, uh, separate kitchens were allowed in those units and indeed exist today, so. The, uh, just a flat out deletion of that, uh. Well, I guess if we're deleting it, that means they are allowed then. So, okay, no further comment.
So you, you, where do you stand on this?
If we're deleting and I'm okay with it, deleting it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Charlie?
Yeah, I see the concern, um, frankly, that, uh, that Keith just mentioned and, um, I guess one. One question here is, does this involve someone taking a, a structure and renovating it? And adding kitchens as opposed to, let's say you have a two-story. Residential unit with apartments already existing on the first or second floor. Does that make a difference or are we talking about? Uh, getting a permit to, to, to renovate, let's say, to convert what is currently a single family home into. Uh, a two-unit rental.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. Uh, we, we need to explore that.
So I guess given your, give it, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Charlie.
Now, I should say, given that, um, I have second thoughts about this one is where I stand on it. I think. We need to do a little bit more research and possibly, uh, add some specificity.
Thank you. Uh, Valerie?
Yeah, so basically what Keith said, what I did is I went into the code and pulled up, um, Article eleven definitions. And I looked up, um. Section two ninety forty-four, um, or no, I'm sorry, excuse me, rumor, border or lodger. And what their definition was. Um, and I think based on this definition, if you read it, that, um. We need to keep it, we need to keep no separate kitchens are provided. Um. And so it's based on reading what the definition for rumor, border. Or lodger is, and I think that. If you decide on deleting that. Um, and also reading the definition for rooming, boarding or lodging house. We either keep it or we ought to consider. Doing. Two ninety dash eleven. And for arguments sake, I'll say Z is a new. Sort of thing, call it vacation rental or short term rental and create its own conditions. Because I think you have a problem if you remove. Um, no separate kitchens are provided, just in what I'm reading with in the code. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Valerie. Um. Number three would be de- deleting, no more than nine guests shall be accommodated at any one time and inserting. The maximum number of people permitted overnight shall be two persons per bedroom. Um, I guess I'll. Go with Valerie. Unless, uh, Todd, did, did, did you want to explain that, Todd?
Todd, you're on mute. Yeah, I, again, this is another one that I was just looking for clarification, um, to make sure it could be caused. You know, no more than nine guests accommodated one time. What happens if it's a one bedroom and then nine people are there? I thought that, that created a limitation of, um, uh, of, you know, of capacity there. Again. This is just something that I, uh, these are talking points that I thought may be available for council to. Talking, maybe give ideas as to other, other ideas, which, which may be convenient, but, um. But one thing which I, I find, you know, somewhat, you know, interesting, you know, in, in the conversation is that. You know, I wasn't in the impression that really the short term rental was going to be for mainly focused on the entire houses, uh, who's being rented. And now it's sort of like, well, there's another possibility out there that these could affect. Um, uh, you know, uh, others that it would just be a basement. Um, which, you know, obviously that would be very different than how, how it's, uh, how it's being listed. So. That's something that, you know, council should have in mind too, you know, is the idea that this, the house is going to be a whole house being. Rented or is it just, you know, a basement, which it falls into witness, but I was talking about as far as, well, why can't the owner be on premises there?
Okay, thanks. Um, so, so Valerie, back to what we were, we're saying, uh, delete. What I read, uh, no more than nine and, and insert the maximum number of people overnight shall be two, two persons per bedroom. Um, your thoughts, Valerie?
Yeah, and, um, I agree with what Todd said, is that if you go on like VRBO or Airbnb or even Google. You have the option of renting a room, an accessory apartment, a basement, a house. A sailboat for goodness sake, a houseboat. And so that's where there's complications that arise. Um, so on this one, I, I, I did this one too. And so I didn't think that a maximum of nine people made sense to me. And once again, even though I don't support short term rentals in the town. Um, I thought it should be, um. Uh, the maximum number of people permitted overnight shall be two persons per bedroom. I thought that would control it. Um, also controlling the size of the house. So if you have two bedrooms, you get four and so forth. I thought nine in a single family home was a bit much. And so. I would support not more than. Maximum number permitted overnight shall be two per bedroom.
Thank you. Charlie?
On this one, um, I am comfortable with the wording change.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
I'm comfortable with the wording change and I think that this is closely linked to number four.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Greg?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. The, uh, the changes we're considering right now. Um, would apply to short term rentals, but they also apply to. Currently allowed vacation rentals, rooming houses and lodging houses. So we would be in effect. Would we be changing the rules on those folks who are already, uh. Operating within the boundaries of the code. Uh, by going to two guests per bedroom, no more than three bedrooms, you're limiting. That entire property to six guests. So. Um, just kind of thinking out loud here, it seems like we would be going back, we would be. Uh, changing the rules on folks who have rooming houses and lodging houses and are operating currently under, under those guidelines, which I presume are. No more than nine guests at any one time. A little concerned about that. Um. I don't think I have any concern about limiting it to a total of six guests, which is what it would be max. If you have two bedrooms. It would be four guests, uh, and as far as short term rentals are concerned. Um, I, I'm okay with, uh. I'm okay with, uh, that change.
Okay, thank you. Um, Keith?
Yeah, thank you. So. I'm going to reiterate some of what's already been said, is three and four are so intricately entwined. That to me, when I look at this, it's, it's like, okay, not more than nine guests shall be accommodated at any one time. And then four was not more than three guest rooms shall be permitted. So between those two things. The maximum number that can be in that house. Is, is nine people. You can put three in each of those bedrooms, but those work in tandem to. Limit the number of people, changing those. Um, by getting rid of or saying two people, you know, and that sounds reasonable too per bedroom. Um, but if a house has five bedrooms, it's a large house, now you have ten people, six, twelve. That could be. You know, six cars, six or seven cars that have to be accommodated now. So, um. You know, I kind of like having the double. It's like, okay, this is the number of people that can be there. And this is how many people per bedrooms or how many bedrooms you can actually rent out. If you have five, you can only rent out three. That kind of thing. So.
Um, right.
So anyway, whether it should be nine or eight or six, I'm open to discussing that. I don't have a, an ideal number. But I, I guess my overriding concern is just, uh, not allowing there to be, uh, kind of a. A congestion built up, uh, in a particular place. Because of too many rentals.
And, and, and if I could help you, Keith, um, yeah, the, we're, we're discussing three now. Be okay with two persons per bedroom. We'll get more into four when we get into four. Um, okay, okay, so I understood what you said and, and, and thank you. Uh, Derek, on number three?
Right, I, I actually, I like the proposed changes as well and, uh, but that. That's very, you know, close to the link to number four, like we, we were just talking about, but, uh. Uh, I, I do also have some question of the applicability or the. Or the effect that, you know, something like this may have to the other uses as well, you know, so. As, as long as we don't, you know, by trying to solve. One problem, create other problems, as long as we don't do that, uh, then I'm, I'm very much in favor of the, uh, proposed changes for, for number three.
Okay, thank you. Now. Number four, okay, not more than three, not more than three guest rooms shall be permitted. Well. That's not addressed in number three. Uh, this is an opportunity as, as Keith and others have, you know, pointed it out to. You, you know, what do we, how do we want to control this? Um. Do we want to say you can only use two guest rooms in your, in your, in your short term rental? Do we, do we want to say three? I mean, that's a, um. Uh, I, I think that some version of four needs to be here, so we can have that. Control as was stated, but, um, okay, I've said that, Derek, number four.
Uh, I, I understand the perspective, uh, I, you know, I was in favor of deleting this because I think, you know, controlling. The number of guests, you know, per bedroom. Uh, you know, versus artificially, you know, capping it. I, I, I get, I get the argument, uh, and as I think about it more, uh. You know, I, I think, uh, I think that's a practical approach to leave this in. Um, the way it's written and that would, again, that would limit it to six. Uh, six guests maximum. Um, it, it's, I, I mean, it all really depends on the house. There's some big houses, you know, that, uh. You know, with four bedrooms and, you know, if we're limiting the three of those. Yeah, I. I, I, I think, I think I can. I, I'm still on the fence on this, but I, I think, I could see both sides.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, Keith? You did kind of weigh in on this, but I'll, let you do it again.
I, um, I would leave this in. I would certainly be willing to discuss whether it should be three or four guest rooms or, or a, a different variation, but. And since I weighed in on four while I'm three, I'll go back to three while I'm on four, just to mention. That, you know, if. that, you know, if, if a couple has a small child, is that child considered a person? Then they want that, that child to be in the room with them? Is that illegal, uh, at that point? So just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. Um, Greg?
Yes, sir. Um, I think I'm on the fence with, with this as well. I would, I could probably live either way with it, uh, going limit now and again. I'm a little concerned how this may affect some of the other uses, but strictly in the arena of short-term rentals, uh, here in town. Uh, I would be okay with limiting it to three guest rooms. I would be okay going to, to a, a larger number, too. Um, that, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. And Larry?
My concern is if, by not deleting number four, we are putting a limit then on the size of the home that can be made available for a short-term rental. And just as this discussion goes on, it's making me ask an overarching question is, have we consulted other towns for their requirements on short-term rentals? We're not the only ones dealing with this. There has to be some other guidance out there that we can draw on, just a general question.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
I support the concept of number four. Um, I, as everyone said, debating two, three, four, I think one consideration here might be to include a, um, I don't know, square footage, or, you know, as permitted by parking, something like that. But generally, um, I think putting, having a limit that allows us to have a little control is not a bad idea. So I don't see any harm in number four.
Thank you, Charlie. Valerie?
Yeah, I support number four, but let me, um, well, first of all, to answer Larry's questions, I looked at, um, the St. Michael's Code, um, because they have short-term rental, um, provisions. And I looked at Laguna Beaches, and so they're online. Um, and that's where I got some of these from, that I thought were applicable to Chesapeake Beach. Um, one suggestion that y'all could take into consideration, if you're worried about the effect on things like other, of, of the other uses, like rooming house, boarding house and lodging house, if you wanted, and you had a condition that you were interested in, you could say parentheses, applicable to vacation rentals only. And that way, you would not be scooping up with these conditions, rooming houses, boarding houses and lodging houses, when you're not interested in doing that. So one thing you could consider, a rent for any condition that you think is only for vacation rentals, applicable to vacation rentals only. And I think you solved part of your problem. And, um, so just to reiterate, I'm in favor of leaving number four as it is.
Okay, thank you. Number five, which is, uh, this is an interesting one. Off-street parking must be provided on short-term rental property and used by, by, by renters. I, this is something that we, that probably needs some clarification. Um, I'll begin this discussion with, with Valerie?
Great, yeah, I wrote this one, too. Um, so the idea here is, um, it seemed like adequate off-street parking was nebulous, like was pointed out by many people. Previous discussions, it's, you know, what does it mean? What is adequate to you might not be adequate to me? So if you're required to, um, provide off-street parking, what does that mean? Well, does that mean that you can rent a space at A1 Antiques, and if you have a short-term renter, um, use that spot? Does it mean like what I saw this weekend, when I saw, um, two people leaving a property that I can see from my home with two suitcases, uh, going to Kelm's Field? So what does it mean to offer off-street parking? And I see off-street parking as being associated with the property that is being rented. And so I support off-street parking must be provided on the short-term rental property and used by renters. I think it clarifies what adequate parking means, and it's explicit. And so I support it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, um, Charlie?
Yeah, I guess I don't have anything to add. I think, um, I, I don't have anything further to add. I, I support, uh, the idea of, of having off-street parking. I'm not sure it matters. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not sure if it matters if they rent it from, um, a private business, if that private business has parking to spare. I don't know that that hurts the town, but I think off-street parking as opposed to, um, maybe what we saw over the Fourth of July on C Street, um, is not a bad idea.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, Larry?
Uh, I support the change to number five.
Thank you. Uh, Greg?
Uh, yeah, I would like to see that change to allowing, uh, no more than one vehicle, uh, parking on public street. Uh, and I think I could fall in line requiring all other parking to occur on that, the subject rental property. Uh, that, that's all I have right now.
Off-street parking. Okay, thank you. Um, Keith? Is it me or Keith?
Keith, you're on mute, we couldn't hear you.
Ah, sorry about that. I support the change to number five.
Thank you. And Derek?
I, I support the change as well.
Okay, very good. Um, number six, property owners shall have a maximum of one short-term rental property subject to disorderness within the Chesapeake Beach limits. Um, I'll begin with Derek.
Yeah, so I see, uh, well, in principle, I, I don't have a problem with limiting to one, but, uh, going back to the point Valerie just made regarding putting in parentheses, specifying, you know, a, a certain criteria is, is applicable to, you know, in this case, vacation rentals versus the others. I, I read this one as, as an attempt to do just that, 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 uh, this would, this particular condition would only be applicable to short-term rentals or vacation rentals. So I think if we use both of the terms in the head thing, we probably need to both here as well. But, uh, again, as far as the, the number, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, limiting the number of, of opportunities, again, which would some of the reasons that were presented earlier, and some of the fears in town, this would allay that. So I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Derek. Uh, Keith? You're on, you, you're doing the mute thing, bud.
I know, I was leaving the mute off for a while, and I got, uh, started turning it back on. Sorry about that. Um, I'm in favor of this one overall. I, I, um, yeah, nothing, nothing will be perfect. Um, I am, you know, just curious as to, you know, what we would define a property owner as, and, and, um, you know, whether a corporation is included, or how you would deal with, with, uh, an entity like that, if that were to occur. But other, but I am in support of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Greg?
I'm, I'm in support of number six. And this is, uh, with a holistic approach, because we're talking about a lot of tweaks here. Uh, but, um, I, I could definitely be in support of, uh, number six and limiting it to one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Larry?
I'm a little torn on this one, and, and I'll, I'll give you an example of why. And, uh, Keith, you sort of touched on this one. Take, for example, where I live in Seagate, uh, this, uh, company Site Realty owned several units here in Seagate for the townhouses. If that requirement were put in place, they would be limited to using only one of those places as a short-term rental. I could see that being a, a little bit restrictive. So I'll just offer that comment. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Jaworski?
Yeah.
Of course, that raises the question of, what happens if the, uh, a, each one of these property owners would have set up a separate corporation? So that the separate corporation would be one owner, but it would be a separate one-use corporation for each of the properties? In, in other words, in other words, so, so in essence, whoever owned the corporation could have multiple ones, because they would have multiple corporations, actually.
No, I, I, I understand the dilemma. I'm just saying, I, I'm, I'm conflicted on this one, because I can see where it could cause a problem.
Yes.
Bounds, I see your point, that someone could try to get around that requirement by doing just that, so.
Of course, of course, in a real si- real-life situation, they'd have to actually, you know, transfer the deed to the new corporation, you know, with the transfer, transfer in the recordation taxes. I'm not sure anybody would want to do that, but still.
Yep, understood.
Okay, thank you. Um, Charlie?
Uh, yeah, I don't, I, I, uh, I support the concept, and I, I just think that it's full, it, for people who really want to do it, that there's opportunities to do it, as Todd pointed out. Um, but I, I support it as it's written.
Thank you. And Valerie?
Yeah, um, on this one, um, this is not actually what I wrote. And so I'll tell you what I wrote. And for property owner and for primary residence, you'll see that they're defined specifically in number 12 and number 13 of this document, the ordinance that you have in front of you. What I actually wrote was this. Property owner is defined below. Property owner has no more than one vacation rental in the town of Chesapeake Beach, Sierra, commercial or maritime. So that would take Larry Seagate out of the question, because it's only CNN, commercial or maritime. And their primary residence, which is defined below, is within the municipal boundaries of Chesapeake Beach. And then as a way to confirm this, which might be more administrative, I wrote, primary residence proof is provided and confirmed yearly, yearly. And so what is written here, provided in the ordinance, I have a real problem with, because it allows for out-of-town property owners to run a short-term rental. Whereas what I wrote, their primary residence would have to be within the municipal boundaries of Chesapeake Beach. And if you look back, instead of having an arbitrary 25 miles, 10 miles, five miles or anything else, the boundary for ownership would be, you'd have to live within the municipal boundaries, a very defined, very recognizable geographic unit. And so the way it's written, I think it has a host of problems. Property owner shall have a max, um, shall have a maximum of one short-term rental property subject to disorderness within the town limits. Because I don't think it goes far enough, because it does not define who, who is the property owner. Um, and like I said, I define the property owner in the definitions below, and primary residence below. So I disagree with this one strongly, the way it's written. However, I agree with what I actually wrote, which is property owner has no more than one vacation rental in the town of Chesapeake Beach, Sierra. You might not need that, because this is all in Sierra, so let's take that out. Property owner has no more than one vacation rental in the town of Chesapeake Beach, and their primary residence is within the municipal boundaries of Chesapeake Beach. And as an administrative concern, that would not be part of the ordinance, but as an administrative effort, primary residence proof is provided and confirmed yearly. That primary residency proof, which is defined below, could be, um, as simple as going on the Coward County GIS, property and topo maps, pulling up the assessment record and seeing if the residence is a primary residence. So I support this concept, not how it's written here, but what I actually wrote. Um, that would also take care of the 25, 10, 5 mile, whatever, that's arbitrary, by confining it within the municipal boundaries. And, um, and so I think it was Keith that asked property owner to find, and, and the way I defined it was right below. And these definitions actually come from the, um, for, for property owner and for, um, primary residence, which is 12 and 13, they come from the St. Michael's Code, if you're wondering where I got those definitions from. So this is how they control it. Um, and their code is really pretty cool, because it's, um, just like ours, they must use the same bloody company or app, or, you know, application. Because if you can navigate our code, you can navigate, navigate their code. It's the same exact stuff. It's really easy to navigate. Um, so the way this is written, I do not support it. I would make the proposal that it should be written, and I'll say slowly, so that I can get it, I can now it. Property owner has no more than one vacation rental in the town of Chesapeake Beach, and their primary residence is within the municipal boundaries of Chesapeake Beach. I think that controls my greatest fear, which is out-of-town property investors, um, using them as a financial vehicle.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to take seven and eight and lump them together for discussion, because on the surface, they appear to be fairly well no brainers. Uh, seven being, um, all property subject to disorderment must obtain all necessary county and town licenses, and all properties subject to disorderment must pay state, county and local taxes. Um, it seems like a no-brainer to me, but, uh, we'll go around. Uh, Valerie?
Um, I'd just say that, um, um, number eight, that since we currently don't have any local taxes, I think what I would say is all property subject to disorderment must pay all applicable state, county and local taxes. I think that allows us a little bit more flexibility. Um, so I would just add between the word all and state, applicable. And that's all I have for this.
Gotcha. Thank you for your suggestion. Uh, Charlie?
Uh, I'm happy with seven and eight as they are.
Okay, uh, Larry?
No comments on either one.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Greg?
Seven and eight, good with me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Keith?
Um, they work for me. I like Valerie's suggestion on number eight. Thank you.
And Derek?
Yeah, I like the suggestion as well, and I don't have any comments on seven or eight.
Okay, um, then we'll go with number nine. Um, property owners or their agents or, or managers shall be available to the town 24 hours a day and 365 days a year. Uh, Derek?
Yeah, so, uh, I would, actually, if you allow Mr. Mayor to ask, uh, Todd to explain, uh, why this was worded the way it is.
Sure. That's great. Todd?
Just as a practical matter, um, you know, if a property owner wants to go out of town, wants to go on vacation, for some reason is not available, let's say they're in a hospital, uh, you know, host of other reasons, um, this says that they have to be available. Uh, what I, my, my thought was that it was when the application process would be done, there would be a secondary contact on the application form, so that if the owner was unavailable, at least the town would have somebody to contact, um, uh, to make, you know, certain decisions with, with regard to the property. So that was it, more than anything about, uh, the shall be available. It was those three words that, uh, they, they caused me some pause.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so following up on that, uh, you know, I liken this to, and, and I know some of my HOA, former HOA colleagues, uh, will know this very well. Uh, you know, we were required to have resident agents, uh, for our HOAs, and I kind of liken this to the same thing. I, I do like the idea of administratively requiring a secondary, or I would even suggest maybe a tertiary contact, uh, as part of the application package, you know, so that could be implemented, administratively. Uh, so, uh, I, I think this is a good idea to, uh, require someone affiliated with the property, uh, to, to be required to be available, uh, 24/7/365. Uh, again, you know, we've said it before, and I don't, I don't see an issue on the surface, maybe someone else may point it out, but, uh, you know, this would be applicable to all uses in, in this section of the code, not just short-term rentals, which we're kind of focusing on. And I don't see an issue with that. I think it's practical for all of them, but, uh, I just want to just make that common as well. So, uh, I, I like this, uh, in principle, and, you know, if, if we want to change Change, you know, the the words of agent or managers to, you know, secondary or tertiary contact, something like that, then I'm I'm in favor, but generally I'm in favor of this. As as is.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, I appreciate that discussion. Thank you, Todd. I um, I agree. I think this is good. I think there should be somebody in addition to the owner that we can fall back on to. If we need to contact.
Okay, thank you. Greg?
Uh, I too agree. I support the comments that have been made so far regarding this. Um. Regarding item nine here, yeah, in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Uh, my only question would be is the definition of available? Cell phone, email, does that all fall into the definition of available?
Good question. Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
And I can tell you, my my opinion would be having it as broad as possible. Available text, cell phone, email, you know, telephone. You know, available means available. Uh, so that's that's how I was.
We might want to, we might want to define that so it's clear.
Thank you. Um. Thank you, Larry. Uh, Charlie?
Yeah, I just echo what what Larry said, and I think um, if maybe it's not necessary in this discussion, but. Even getting to the level of specificity of response time would seem appropriate to me.
That's a good point. Thank you, Charlie. Valerie?
Um. Yeah, I I once again don't agree with agents or managers. I just think that I don't want to confuse anything about. You know, property managers and property management companies and all that. But I like Derek's suggestion of secondary context, so my suggestion would be property owners or their secondary contacts shall be available three uh, to the town. Uh, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year with a response time within. And then let's pick a time. So my first suggestion is change agent or managers with secondary contact. Um, and then um, we're within a response time of. And I'd leave it broad also because we use. Email, phone now, um, text, who knows in a few years what we'll be using, what technology will give us. So um, and then whatever the guys think that a reasonable response time is. Um, 60 minutes, you know, an hour. Three hours, five hours, whatever the guys think is fine with me. Um. Those would be my suggested changes to this property owners or their secondary contracts shall be available. For the town 24 hours a day, 365 days a year with a spot with a response time within. Whatever. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, number 10. Subject properties in the commercial zone that are mixed use shall. Shall only rent property on the second level residential area. Valerie?
Yeah, I really don't like the way this one was rewritten, because I think second level residential area implies something that's not really accurate. And so I'm basing this potentially off of. What planning and zoning has been talking about for the during their comprehensive plan discussion. And I'm not saying it will happen. I'm saying it may happen. But what I wrote was if a parcel. And it might not even be applicable to CNN, since this is already just applicable to CNN, I'm going to take the C out. Um, so if a parcel. Is zone mixed use, a vacation rental is only permissible on the second level above the first level commercial enterprise. What I'm specifically getting here is as planning, and maybe I didn't capture it well, y'all won't like it, but. Planning and zoning has spent a lot of time talking about like the gateway and the hilltop. And sometimes what they talk about is this idea of a commercial enterprise, like an ice cream shop or a bike shop on the first floor. And on the second floor, a residential unit. What they didn't want was to have the whole building as a potentially redeveloped. To be residential, to be multiunit in these areas. So my thought here was that if this ordinance were to be approved. That this would possibly be a way to reflect what planning and zoning has been working on. Um, and be very explicit regarding vacation rentals. So um, that's the genesis of this. And so what I wrote was if a parcel is zone mixed use. Um, and again, since vacation rentals and um, short term rentals only are applicable to CNN, commercial and maritime. I would remove the C that I put in there. Um, so assuming that stays the way it is, only CNN. Then if a parcel is on mixed use, a vacation rental is only permissible on the second level above the first level commercial enterprise. And this would also hopefully take into account the discussed 35 feet. Um, height limit. That they're discussing. Um, even though it's not specified here, and that the first level would be an ice cream shop, the second one, the second level would be the Airbnb. So that was a thought on this one. Um, but what I don't like about how it's written in 10, and I don't support is on the second level residential area. I'm not sure what that means, because um, it's not like this is going to be in. Um. Since the short term rentals and they're only in CNN, I just don't know what second level level residential area means. We don't have that as a land use site. Um, so that was my thought behind this one. Um, take it or leave it, you know, I just thought it might be a way to. Support. Vacation rentals in. The gateway area, but once again, I don't want to mislead anyone. I do not support short term rentals. Period. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Valerie. Uh, and Charlie?
Yeah, it seems to me that that a possible better wording of this is that you would only allow. Short term rentals in residential. In the residential part of the building. It seems like that would accomplish the same goal or what what Valerie is is asking for, I think. Um, I support the concept, if I understand it correctly, of um, you know, not creating a model. Where, you know, what's supposed to be a coffee shop turns out to be a short term rental. Um. So I do support that, and maybe it's just a question of working out the wording.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
I agree with Charlie's comments, that I think it needs a little more definition, and I would just offer the question as as I think Valerie did, why is it limited only to the C zone? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Uh, I might be wrong here, but this matter seems like, this item 10 seems like it it's redundant to me. Um, planning and zoning right now is is working on a comprehensive plan, and our in the planning and zoning code. Ultimately, uh, defines mixed use as being ground level commercial and allowing. Residential use above that. Um, isn't that a done deal? Uh, that that's uh. Now, I I'm in support of of allowing property owners some flexibility there, and I've said it before, and it'll come up again, but uh. If we, if a property owner can't get a business into a ground floor and it remains vacant. Um, and there aren't any other options there, um, you know, it's worthwhile considering that, but uh. It seems to me that item 10 would be redundant, and and maybe we're putting the cart before the horse here, and we kind of need to see what the comprehensive plan and what these code changes are going to. Ultimately be, because that'll that may take care of that right there.
Well, that's a good point. Um. Keith?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I like the concept too. I think that we probably need some wordsmithing, which has already been noted, and I like, uh, you know, I agree with Greg. In that it it may be just a little too early to throw this one in here.
Thank you. Uh, Derek?
Likewise, I agree with the concept. Uh, I I also like the suggestions that that have been made, although I I would say in. In contrast to what Greg said, uh. You know, if if they end up being redundant, that's fine, as long as they're in parallel, um, you know, we're. We're gonna, I I hope, uh, we're going to vote on this ordinance well before we vote on the comprehensive plan, so I, you know, for us to. Have a strong idea of what's what we're going to consider later in the comprehensive plan, um, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot more work to be done there before, uh, where this is in front of us now. And uh, you know, if if we agree with this in principle now, and and we expect it in the future, I don't I don't see that the redundancy hurts. Uh, you know, and if if, you know, one or the other needs to be tweaked in the future, so be it. It's easier to strike something than to, you know, redevelop, so. Uh, my suggestion would be to keep it in, you know, uh, can with the uh, some of the suggested revisions that we talked about. And uh, with the, you know, understanding this is, and this also, you know, provides planning and zoning a clear guidance on what we expect. Frankly, or what we, you know, we anticipate, and you know, and and if, again, also if. If they are, uh, you know, if if this and if the code and the the comprehensive plan are are. Uh, in agreement on on this subject, then I don't see there's any harm there, but you know, since we're we're gonna uh. Vote on this, we know well before the other, I I think it's, I think we should keep it in.
Thank you, sir. Um, number 11. Section 29043 shall add the term vacation rental or short term rental. As all residential housing used less than than 30 days per tenant. Uh, stay right with you, Derek?
Yeah, I I think this is a fine definition, and and frankly, I think the other two are are fine as well, so uh. You know, I'm I'm fine. I have no, no comments.
Okay, thank you. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. All residential housing is less than 30 days per tenant. No, I think that will work, and you know, and I also like the suggestion, I think that uh, it was Valerie who said, you know, maybe having. Bracketed statements with throughout here indicating which of the types. Of housing unit we're talking about for some of these, because they don't all apply equally, I think, to. To, let me get the terminology here correct. Um, vacation rental, short term rentals, rooming house, lodging house is uh, what I think we have, and so. Uh, I think that will help. So anyway, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Keith. Greg?
Yeah, I I agree with number 11. Uh, I think it helps, it should go pretty far in eliminating one of our number one. Problems is the ambiguity, the ambiguity in the code regarding specifically short term rentals, so uh. Um, I'm glad to see that uh, where we're addressing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Larry?
I'm okay with 11.
Charlie?
I'm okay with 11 as well.
And Valerie?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. Can I say, I I just don't know. Is there any other thing that could be a short term rental? Other than a residential house? And it's just a question. I don't expect anyone to answer this. When I saw residential housing, I'm sitting there going. I wonder if that's all encompassing, but um, no, it's fine, the way it's written.
Mr. Mayor, may I make another statement?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, it it's actually a question, and. When it says all residential housing used less than 30 days per tenant. Does that, does that include a portion of that residential housing? So if you rent out two bedrooms, or is it always the whole house, or? I don't, I don't know, Todd, if you.
I I think your interpretation is absolutely correct, because um, I was thinking this would apply more to the whole house, but. Indeed, if somebody is only renting a room or a basement or something like that, yeah, this creates a restriction on that. There's no doubt about it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We can work on that. Um. Okay, fine, thank you. Well, um, number 12. Section 290 dash 43 shall add the definition of property owner. A person holding title to a property or or two, or more persons holding title to a property. Under any form of joint ownership. Uh, Valerie?
Yeah, so property owner and primary residents kind of go hand in hand. And they were defined once again, um. With that suggested property owner has no more than one vacation rental in the town of Chesapeake Beach, and their primary residence. Is within the municipal boundaries of Chesapeake Beach. So with that condition. Had to define property owner and had to define primary residence. And so. Both of those kind of like concepts came from the St. Michael's code, and so I'm supportive of how they're written. I don't think we need. Primary residence. But we do not adopt um, that as written, because I don't think, not sure we use primary residence anywhere else. Um, so it doesn't make sense to define something if you're not going to be using it. Um.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Charlie?
I I'm okay with this in principle. I think, you know, we've covered this topic in a number of other, a couple of other of the numbers. I'm not quite as committed to one. Um, I understand the fear, and I understand you don't want someone owning 10. Uh, but I'm not quite as committed to one, but in concept, I I understand the point. I just think there's some discussion room. I think I'll I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
I'm okay with the wording in 12.
Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Same with me. I agree with the wording and the definition. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
I like number 12. No changes.
Uh, Derek, you already said that you like it.
Yes.
I'll I'll take your word for it. Um, okay, um, last one. Um, number 13, section 290 dash 43. Shall add the definition of primary residence. The legal residence of an individual for purposes of income tax calculations and filing. Uh, I'll begin with Derek.
Yep, no, I I like this, and uh, you know, to Valerie's point, even if we don't use this term in. 290 dash 11Q, I think it's an important term to define for the code. Uh, it's really clarifies. What that is in a very common sense way, and and I'm supportive of adding it in.
Thank you, sir. Keith?
I'm good with this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Greg?
Uh, item 13 good with me too. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Sorry, okay with 13.
And Charlie?
Yeah, I'm okay with 13 too.
And Valerie?
Okay.
Okay, uh, that's all 13. Here's what, here's what I want to do, everybody, is obviously. Staff and I have a little bit of work ahead of us this week, and you know, you're getting together all the comments and and what have you. I want to um. I want to uh, get you guys, as soon as we have it, a a a draft. Remake, if you will, and send it to you. You you can send it back to us with 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 any additional comments, but. I want to uh, get get you that one last stab before it's introduced, so uh, we will do that for you. Um, and before we close this item out, I'll just um, see if anybody has a last comment that that they want to make on the ordinance. Um, and I'll I'll begin with Valerie, and I'll work my way around the horn for comments on the ordinance.
Yeah, just one comment on par. I'm not sure, it's really a penthouse, it might be tourist house. Tourist house. It's a word that we may want to delete. I think that's where some of the confusion is. And uh. Once again, you know, I'll reiterate again, my biggest concern is a is about out of town, single family home buyers swooping in. Down solely for a financial gain. Using property management companies and resulting loss of long term rentals and increasing property values and affordability for seniors and first time buyers. And the fact that this is applying to CNN, I'm also concerned with the potential increase in the commercial district footprint. Um, I've heard, you know, interesting it going from. Um. Where it is now, on Hilltop, I think A1 Antiques Octagon going down to Bethany Park. In another report, there was interest in going down to 60 from Bethany Park to Northview. And my biggest fear is increasing footprint, because it does change the fabricated neighborhood, it does change the property values and affordability. Um, for those that want to buy a single family home. for those that want to buy a single-family home. And it removes those single-family homes out of the long-term rental stock. So I have great concerns about allowing vacation rentals. But if there's going to be an ordinance that is voted upon, then it ought to be the strongest ordinance produced. Which is why I participated in this endeavor. And spent a lot of time researching it. And so I have great concerns about how this would change the quality of life in Chesapeake Beach and the residential nature of where we live. And especially if we're considering, even if there's talk about increasing the commercial footprint, since right now, short-term rentals and vacation rentals would only be allowed in commercial America. There are times a pretty defined area of commercials. What we have decided to vote with planning, wanting to land his nap. Any risk of that area increasing means that we'll have an increase potentially in short-term rentals. And I find that immensely frightening. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, any comment, any last comments on the ordinance?
I, two things at a very high level. I think this represents a good start at what could be a viable compromise to to all of the discussions that we've had so far. And I, I just want to make one overarching comment that, you know, this does put some restrictions and rules in place that we currently don't have for properties, whether they're being used legally or not. And so to me, this this represents progress on both sides and a compromise that I I would be comfortable with if we work out some of the questions we discussed today.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Just build a little bit on Charlie's comments. I think we all realize that short-term rentals are happening in town without town's approval. So it'll be good to have a framework in place under which we can enforce some regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Greg?
Yeah, I agree with Charlie's comments. Kind of double back on Councilman Favre's comments regarding my comment of redundancy, if you will, sorry. If the mixed-use commercial with this ordinance and this vehicle, my colleagues and of course, Mr. Mayor, yourself, the majority agree that they they don't want residential use on the bottom floor of these mixed-use areas, even though I would still vote against that. I'm in support of making that change now. That gets us there faster where we're trying to, you know, it helps planning and zoning, like like Derek said, know what we're, what we're going to do. And I would expect that code to reflect that. And wouldn't have an issue with it being in both locations at that point. And and again, I think our goal here with this ordinance is to provide guidance for short-term rental. There may be, I would just want to be cautious about inadvertent effect and proverbially, proverbially pulling a rug out from some other uses that have been legally operating. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And Keith?
Yeah. Thank you. So one question about the ordinance, and and it's kind of a potantic item, but I'll bring it up since we're here discussing it. In item one and item R, the word, the purpose and intent of this correction, and I just correction, I was just wondering if that's the right word, or whether this is a modification or change rather than a correction to to existing ordinances, and whether that should be changed. Do you see that there in the third line of item one? Last sentence, the purpose and intent of this correction. And again, the problematic word to me was correction, where I thought it should be modification or change or something like that. I don't know. Maybe there's a legal reason to use that word. But it was also used in part R. And I just thought it should be modification.
Yeah. I think you're right, but we'll let Todd figure that out.
Yeah, I can tell you, Keith, that was more of a earlier draft that sort of just kept funneling through. So, no, I I agree. That's not the proper term. We'll follow up with that.
Okay, okay, great. And and with respect to the overall ordinance itself, while I really appreciate everybody, you know, knuckling down and looking at this, I'm I'm not a fan of the short-term rentals. I've not made a secret of that. And and I do think it is important, you know, when we're trying to insert this into existing code, that again, we aren't doing something inadvertent to the other folks who may already have that type of property by limiting it in some way that we're, we're all thinking about this vacation rental idea when there's also other types or classes of of housing that's in there. So anyway, with that, I will let let you go on. Thanks.
And lastly, Derek?
Yes, thanks. And thanks to everyone who who participated in this, you know, and the idea is to try to address the legality of it, clarify the code and 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 move on. So I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, you taking the time tonight for us to have a robust discussion on all of these conditions existing and suggested new ones, and and also allowing us to preview the revision of the ordinance as well before it's introduced. So I think that's going to go a long way to addressing a, you know, a very vocal issue that, you know, I think we can, we can make some progress on. So thank, thanks again for that.
Okay, thank you. Next item of business. Memorative of Understanding with the Board of Commissioners of Calver County Government Regarding the Highlands Sewer Connection. Holly, I'll let you lead in.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we've talked about the need for the Highlands community to connect to public sewer. We looked at a couple of different scenarios. We've spoken about this with the county and a few different versions of what that could look like. We took the council comments back to the county after our last review of this. And we have a revised MOU that we've put before you with some of the terms that would include for the county to be able to complete this project. The town in doing that would purchase capacity from the county at the county rate and charge the residents of the Highlands that same county rate, so that all members of the community would be consistent in the special tax district. The difference would be that the town residents would pay the town for their connection fee, whereas the county residents would pay the county. And and I would be available for questions, Mayor.
Sure. I'll I'll begin with Derek.
Yes, thank you. So I'm very much in favor of this. It makes sense that, in every aspect, I don't, I don't think I have any questions on the, in principle. I would ask Holly, with the agreement that was provided, is there opportunity to suggest revisions to that? And and I'll point to on page two, number five in particular, says the town will have the opportunity to review. And I just know from from, you know, the work I do with with the government, I I really think they should say the town shall have the opportunity, because that really, that makes it a requirement. I don't know, I maybe defer to Todd on the the difference between will and shall, but I know shall is a very strong term that requires, you know, the, in this case, the town having the opportunity to review and comment on the plans. Because I would, I would want, I would want to make sure that we we have, there's no wiggle room there that, you know, that we wouldn't have that opportunity to review and comment on the plans. So that would be my only suggestion, if if you're able to make suggested revisions to the agreement.
Yeah, and I can tell you, Derek, that those both, both those terms are mandatory. So, but change, changing yours is fine.
Right. Well, if that's the case, then that's, I just want, I just want to make sure that there's no, you know, opportunity for us, the town, to, you know, lose the opportunity to review and comment on a, you know, small technicality there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, thank you. I'm I'm definitely in support of 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 moving forward on this. I I just wanted to get a little additional clarification. If I could, in terms of would you go over what you said about the 40 residential units and and the the payment and how that is divided again?
Yes. So the the county has a lower connection fee than the town. So the plan would be that the town would purchase 40 connections from the county. So the county's capacity would decrease, and those 40 connections would come over to the town. The town would pay the county directly for those 40 connections, and then the town would bill the residents that rate. So we would not charge the town's current rate, which is is higher. We would charge a county rate over a period of time, however the council decides to do that for the the residents of Highlands.
Okay, so when you say charge the county rate for the service or to recoup the $5,400, what what?
There's a little confusion about that with the county, and and we did speak with them. The goal would be to charge the county rate for the connection only. And then, once we move on to billing, the town would bill the town residents the town sewer rate.
Oh, okay, that's, that clarifies things for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No more questions.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, this this looks pretty good. Good job. I really didn't have any questions regarding this. I'll follow along with what Councilman Favre mentioned regarding item five. That, we definitely would want to have the opportunity to review and comment prior to inaction. In other words, we wouldn't want to be handed a copy of something after it was completed or underway. But other than that, my other comment was regarding, under the recommendation section that Holly had, I like charging the town sewer rates to as many of those properties as possible. That, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Larry?
A couple of comments. One, I guess, just editorial one. I'll bring this up only because it appears in the IGA as well. The legal name of our plant is the Chesapeake Beach Water Reclamation Treatment Plant, which is missing from the IGA. Just add that in there. And then in questions, I just wanted to confirm, well, one of them's already been confirmed, that's on the long-term billing. I just wanted to confirm that the town does indeed take on the maintenance of that. And then my question, although I don't see our engineer on here anymore, item 12. Just a question is, it says, parties agree that sewer materials shall flow into a manhole and not the sewer main without the explicit written approval of the town. I have no idea why that's in there.
Yes. And and Jay probably can speak to that as well, but the town did not, when the plans were initially designed, we had issues with them using the town's main for this project. So we had had that requirement from the town that they not go through the town's main for for many reasons.
Okay, now I understand. We're talking about the sewer flows coming from the county's portion of the Highlands development. Is that correct?
Right. But the town would cover, your earlier question, the town would cover the maintenance for the town resident lines. Those would be turned over to the town.
Right, but this this does not apply then to residents within the town boundaries, living in the Highlands, connecting to the sewers. They do not have to connect only to a manhole. They can actually have a connection to the sewer line itself. Is that correct?
Jay, do you want to clarify that for Captain Mandorski?
Sure. And I think it's leftover language from the original proposed plan. So there's a little bit of that we have to clean up and also some specifics when we get down. They haven't provided us with the written plan yet, but as we get down to that, it's, most of it's not going to be a gravity sewer. It's going to be a pressure sewer. So there's some features and valves that we're going to define ownership and maintenance. And we have to kind of work that out once they submit their final plan, Larry. But I do think 12 was left over from their very original plan, where they were going to use part of the town's main along 260.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
Yeah, certainly not my area of expertise, but from what I've heard, you know, this seems like a no-brainer, and I I think this is a huge chunk of good work. And I think there'll be a lot of people pretty happy with this when we get this done. So thank, no, no comments or editorials.
Very well. Lastly, Valerie?
Oh, yeah, just just solidify my understanding, and then I have a few questions. So we're purchasing, purchasing the tax from the county, using their capacity, because they charge less than we do for sewer tax. They charge $5,400. So if we do 5,400 times 40, sewer taxes, $216,000, is that going to come out of the reclamation treatment budget?
That would come out of the utility fund.
Perfect. That's what I would expect. Sorry, I should have said the utility fund. And we have that money there, right? I mean, as needed, we have enough reserves to pay for that.
Yes, it's not in the budget, so we would have to allocate that. The question is timing, when we would need to do that. They haven't even established the special tax district, so I think we have some time and we'll bring that back to council. But but yes, we do have some money available in reserves to cover that.
So one of the things we're doing by charging the county rate and buying it from them for the 40 tax, who's been not charging are more expensive. Capital connection fees, which I think is fair, because when someone buys a home or builds a home, like in one of the HOAs, like Chesapeake Village, or if they build one, before, they know automatically that they're going to have to pay a capital connection fee. It's not a secret. And so I I think this is immensely fair, because this may not have been an intended expense that these folks had. Speaking of expenses that these folks have, I see number three on your report, where it talks about 100% of the engineering costs and 100% of the construction costs and the county administration fee. I assume those are one-time fees and special tax. That's my question. They know these folks up there. How long will they have to pay it back? And it's obviously more than $5,400. What's the estimated cost once again?
Right. So that that will be defined in the special tax district, and the community members will be able to have input in that. But typically, it could be 20, 30 years. It could go over a period of time.
And the full estimated for a cost of 5,400 plus 100% for the engineering cost, 100%. What my concern is is that we provide them enough, as much time as possible, because some of these folks up there are retired and on a fixed income, and this will hurt them. Might benefit the environment, and it might benefit the neighborhood, and it might benefit the town. But on an individual, person-by-person basis, the cost of this can be detrimental to someone on a fixed income. So I'm glad part of that was addressed by using the county's capital connection that will accrue from the town's capital. But I do feel with feel for these folks and stuff. I don't know if we have any influence over the length of time for the special ta- tax district. But you can always pay off debt early if you want, most of the time. It'd be nice to see that we support as much time as possible for these folks. You know, just, I have concerns about some of their ability to pay. It's a great thing to do, but it's a cost. The only other question I have is on number six on the IGA. It talks about the county will share water consumption data for these 40 units. It's my understanding that over the past number of years, Public Works Utility Department, County, just everybody has worked really hard to get really good numbers as we do meter readings and things like that. And I know we base sewer charges based on water consumption. And so when it comes to sewer charges for these folks, will we have as much confidence? Will we have as much confidence in the water consumption numbers that we're getting? As you guys have been able to provide our residents in our town, we have very good numbers that we have a lot of confidence in. It's taken years to get to that point. So you have confidence in the water consumption data that you're going to get from the town?
I have not seen the data that they're proposing to provide us, but I definitely will request that and we'll review that internally. Make sure that we're not missing anything or need to request it, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that we'll get the information we need.
Well, Holly, you guys have done great. I mean, just how, how accurate our data has become when it comes to water consumption. Much better than where it used to be. And so it's just something to keep in mind because we will charge these guys sewer. Based on their water consumption. And even if we could get longitudinal data going back some period of time for the water usage. It may also help like identify any sort of. Potential leaks over time that may have, may occur. Because we'll know what their trend lines are and how much they normally use. So again, I'm just trying to look out these folks up there in the Highlands. And make sure, you know, we're getting them the best deal possible. And that when we do charge them for sewer, that they have confidence. In the uses that they're being moved for when the time comes. And so I think the sooner we get on that, the better. And that's all the comments I have on this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll end the meeting with the, with the council lightning round, I'll stay right with you Valerie and we'll work our way around.
Um, like I said, I'm, I might, I might disagree with vacation rentals. And short-term rentals in the town of Chesapeake Beach. And you might ask like, why I spent so much time looking into it and why I provided. Different sort of requirements and that's because. If we're going to be voting on something, even though I disagree with it. I want it to be as strong as possible. As logical as possible, as clear as possible, as fair as possible. So even though I don't agree with the overall ordinance. I think that this process has been very good and very fair. And I think Derek's to be commended for kind of forcing the issue along. And getting us to a point where instead of just talking, we're actually sort of. Of going over specific points. And I think, I think this really helps us move along and get over this topic, which I think is one of. What was not speaking for, but one of Derek's hopes is that we could move beyond this. And so I want to actually spend my time during the lightning round to think, Derek, you did a good job on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Valerie. Charlie?
I, I was going to echo what Valerie said, I mean, the amount of work that went into this and, you know, amount of work we did tonight. But I really appreciate the field trips and, and other work that went into, to drawing this up and I, I hope we are able to reach. Something that will allow us, at least until we get the conference of plan going, to put this behind us, so thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Just echo the sentiments that have already been said, a very good discussion tonight on a controversial topic. I thought the discussion went very well, everyone shared their thoughts on a very amicable basis. Good job by everybody. Thank you, Holly and staff for all the work you put into this. On a totally unrelated matter, I just wanted to point out that the deadline for the Maryland Sustainable Growth Awards is July 23rd, so. We'll be getting something in, I'm sure on that, and anybody else is welcome to submit as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Yeah, as, as all of you know, I'm dialing in remotely from Cleveland, Ohio this evening. And with this, moving into the post-COVID realm here. Had a couple of discussions with some colleagues and would appreciate. Would appreciate if the town could, could look into, looking forward, and it's an honor to serve the town in any capacity. It's an honor to serve the town in any capacity. But once we resume in-person meetings, I'm just wondering if there's any room to legally. Be a part of the live meeting dialing in remotely and I'm not encouraging people to do that, but. Obviously, if we're in, in full in-person meetings, I'm not there tonight, there's no way for me to be there. And it comes into, you know, people are, are very sick. Possibly, maybe they could dial in remote, but if we could look into that and see maybe what other people are thinking about and seeing if there's a route we can take. That would allow us to come in remotely, I'd appreciate that. Other than that, I appreciate the discussion, the discussions we've had tonight, appreciate the organization behind it all and I hope everybody continues to enjoy the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mary. Great, great meeting, I appreciate all the discussion. And especially on the short-term rentals and. I just wanted to throw one thing unrelated, totally unrelated, just to see if I could get it on an agenda or get some feedback on it at some point, I think we had. Talked a little bit about street cleaning and, and whether the town was going to. Look into that a little bit further, I think there was some discussion that there were, just curious what folk, what, what the administration may have found out on, on opportunities to. Do a little bit of street cleaning on some of the main thoroughfares, it's been noted how there's a lot of debris. Sometimes screws or nails, glass that accumulates on the curb area where bike riders. Will be, will be riding and it can be kind of dangerous, could pop, pop a tire or slip pretty easily. Anyway, just would like to throw that out there, see if we can get, get, get a update on that, where the town stands on that. And with that, I wish you all a great, great evening and take care.
Thank you. And lastly, Derek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two very important topics that we covered tonight in detail and. And I think if, if we can accomplish something in both of them, you know, the town will be better off in general and. Appreciate the opportunity to, to work with you all, everyone on this call. You know, what we can accomplish working together, I think that's kind of a testament to, to what that is and what, you know, we've become as, as a body, so I just want to. Thank everyone for, again, I think as Larry said, the cordial discussions tonight and. You know, look forward to, to moving on to other things as well, so we'll. We'll see you all next week and again, enjoy the, enjoy the beautiful weather and hope everyone stays safe.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.